All right, we will call to order the November 20th Meeting of El Paso County Planning Commission. We'll go over our designate our voting members today. Ms. Jack, Mr. Byers, Ms. Fuller, Mr. Murray's, Mr. Shiples, Mr. Whitney and myself. Staff, do we have any reports?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Megan Harrington, Planning Director. I don't really have any reports for you this morning. Jessica does have a calendar of the meetings for 2026 that she will pass out to you. Our next meeting is December 4th and we do have a meeting scheduled for December 18th, although I do believe at this point those are going to be light agendas. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
I'm gonna pass this down. This is just for you guys to take home, the one that's in your binder, I will adjust later, so just keep these.
Great, this is the time when we allow the public to speak to us on items that might not be on or are not on our agenda. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak to us today? Seeing none, we'll proceed. Approval of minutes, agenda 3A item. Anybody have any changes to the minutes? Seeing none, we'll approve those as presented. On to our regular item, item 5A, VA 253, variance of use, pro trans variance of use.
My name is Joseph Letke. I will be the sole presenter today for this regular item. The project is VA 253, pro trans variance of use. I was the planner, project manager for this application and Joseph Sandstrom was the engineer who reviewed the application. For public input, if you are watching remotely and have not provided a name and reliable phone number, please email that information to PCDhearings@elpassoco.com. So this request is for a variance of use approval for a commercial vehicle repair garage within an existing hangar in the Meadow Lake Airport. The Meadow Lake Airport is within the R4 Planned Development Zoning District and it's also within the GA-O, that's for General Aviation Overlay Zoning District, which prohibits non-aviation-related land uses. The Land Development Code defines a vehicle repair garage, commercial, as an establishment used for the care or repair of passenger vehicles like trucks, so that would include transmission repair. This next slide here is the criteria of approval. I do recognize that this board is very familiar with this criteria, however, I'll let this slide up for any members of the audience to take a look at before we move on. My next slide is on some general history of the area for the Meadow Lake Airport. The GA-O Overlay District was established or adopted for the Meadow Lake Airport property in 1970, expanded uses on the property to include airport-related uses in addition to the underlying agricultural zoning districts. 1970, a 196-acre portion of the Meadow Lake Airport was rezoned from Agricultural 3 to R-4 Planned Development to support the development of the Meadow Lake Airport as a private airport. In 1981, the Board of County Commissioners approved a rezoning from R4 for 210 acres, which includes the 1975 R4 Zoning District Boundary and land-zoned Agricultural 3. The subject property was platted in 1982 as Block 17, Lot 13 of the Meadow Lake Airport filing number 3. So a very important component of this application is the GA-O, the General Aviation Overlay District, that has use restrictions, so no building or land may be used and no building may be erected, converted or structurally altered except in accordance with the following requirements. And then specific to the Meadow Lake Airport GA-O uses, the following uses are allowed in non-residential areas of the Meadow Lake Airport, including the GA-O Overlay Zoning District. So those uses are strictly related to airplane, hangar, aviation-related uses. My next slide includes a, our GIS map that shows that aviation overlay to include the subject property as well as the general Meadow Lake Airport area. Next, I have a zoning map of the area to include that R4 Planned Development area and then the Planned Unit Development area to the south. So my next slide includes the site plan for where the property is located, the existing hangar and to show egress and ingress to the property through that 40-foot easement. You can note here that there's some additional parking that was added to the site plan that was done a week, week and a half prior to the original Planning Commission hearing, which is why it was postponed to this date. So my next slide shows the site plan with customer traffic routing. So customers come to the property via judge or road, they go south down Sesna Drive into the Meadow Lake Airport to the subject property. So the general notes on the site plan describe essentially dimensions and information about the proposal. So the total variance of use area is 1,040 square feet. We have six total parking spaces, total employees for the business is two, and that the variance of use shall apply to units E and F. All the improvements are existing other than some additional parking that is shown on the site plan in my last slide. I did want to note that the applicants have requested a substitute landscape plan and have opted to do a mural on the hangar doors because plantings are challenging and prohibited within the Meadow Lake Airport. My next slides address the master plan. The place type character is employment center. The area of change is minimal change undeveloped and the property is not located within key area of influence. So my analysis of the employment center place type for this property is that this place type does identify the Meadow Lake Airport area as an employment center. In this place type, vehicle transmission repair can be defined in both the primary and secondary recommended land uses. Additionally, page eight of the master plan, key planning considerations uses the Meadow Lake Airport as an example of an employment and transportation hub. I did include a relevant objective. The employment center should comprise of land of industrial, office, business park, manufacturing, distribution, warehousing and other similar business uses. Within this master plan place type, it provides general guidance for the area. It does not offer a lot-specific direction, instead it characterizes the area in broader planning terms. Although the master plan supports the proposed land use, existing plat notes and zoning regulations currently restrict non-aviation uses on the subject property. So master plan identifies this property in the greater Meadow Lake Airport area as within the minimal change undeveloped area of change. The Meadow Lake Airport is expected to maintain its current overall use, continuing to develop as an airport with related and supporting land uses. This level of development aligns with existing land uses and reflects a minimal degree of Next, I have some engineering slides, so I'll turn over to my colleague.
Good morning, Joe Sandstrom, Department of Public Works. For the drainage and erosion on this site, it's not within a regulatory floodplain. A drainage report and grading erosion control plan were not required due to the minimal increase in imperviousness and the negligible disturbance on the site. The property is located in the Solberg Ranch Drainage Basin and there are fees, but there's no fees assessed with variance of use applications. For transportation, Joe Letke did a really good job talking about the access, which is obtained via Sesna Drive, which is a paved private roadway in the county. Traffic impact study was not required for this application as it meets the traffic impact study exemption in ECM B.1.2D. The property is not subject to the El Paso County Road Impact Fee Program because the use was established prior to the fee program. Are there any questions regarding drainage or traffic?
So my next point is regarding some code enforcement background. This is an active code enforcement complaint. There were some complaints received in 2021, 2024, currently in 2025. The, I did want to note that the applicant's letter of intent stated that the business has been operating at its current location on Sesna Drive since 2006. 2021, the code enforcement case was closed due to the officer believing that the business was removed from the hangar. However, in 2024, an additional complaint was received and code enforcement staff verified that the commercial vehicle repair business has been operating out of zoning compliance. Additional code enforcement complaint was received recently in October and if this variance of use is approved by the Board of County Commissioners, that would remedy the code enforcement case and it would be closed.
Mr. Whitney?
Can I ask a quick question, Ms. Letke?
Sure.
Ms. Letke, you said that the 2021 complaint, I think, was dismissed based on the understanding that the business was removed from the hangar. Do you know on what basis that understanding was?
So when a complaint is received and if a code officer goes out to a site, if they see no activity and they can't prove that the business is operating out of that property, they will typically close out the case. That is my understanding, is that the officer visited the property during normal business hours and saw no activity and thus believed that the complaint was not valid and then closed out the case.
Okay, wow. Yeah, all right. Thank you, I think.
I've got a question while we're asking questions. Earlier in the presentation, you said that the square footage there at the Occupy is just 1,064 square feet or something?
Yes.
Is that, and that's two units, so each unit's like less than 600 square feet?
That is my understanding correct.
Okay, right. Ms. Fuller?
I think what Mr. Whitney might have been getting at is, did the applicants, the applicant now, did they say that the business was closed in 2021 or there was just no contact and there was an assumption made by the code enforcement person that wasn't corrected?
I believe it was the assumption made by the code enforcement staff.
Thank you.
Actually, Ms. Fuller, thank you. For the record, I wasn't at anything. What I was looking for was the answer to the question, on what basis was it removed?
So next, I have summary of neighborhood input. I did want to note, we have received support and opposition of this application. For support, there are four letters received. There's an emphasis on the longevity of the business being operated at the current location. They speak to the positives of the small business and the lack of negative impact to the Meadow Lake Airport. The opposition received, we received six letters and there's my understanding, some folks in the audience who wish to speak in opposition. Additionally, there is an open code enforcement complaint. The concerns that I did summarize in the slide are over issuance of permits and approvals for non-aviation-related uses within the airport, as well as concerns with traffic, customers speeding through the airport or blocking hangar access, taxiway blockage has been a reoccurring item within those letters. For full citizen input, that can be found within the EDARP file. I also wanted to note that some of the photos that were provided by the opposition were cut off in some of those emails in EDARP. So for Planning Commission members, I printed out those emails so you can get an actual correct visual of what was submitted to us. As far as hearing notification, Planning Community Development did notify 63 adjoining property owners on October 22nd for this Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners hearings. Additionally, August 12th, the applicant did state that they mailed letters to the other additional owners of the property as it's in an LLC that has multiple owners, making them aware of this application as well as if they have a use that is somehow related to this to join the application, that letter is available within the EDARP file. And then to speak to the last hearing that was postponed, I did want to bring up that the Board of County Commissioners hearing scheduled for December 11th is still the correct date for the hearing. My last slide is on the applicant and provides ownership is 7936 Sesna Drive. The owner is Jeff Gennarda. The representative is Vertex Consulting. Are there any questions that I can address with Plan Commission members?
Chair?
Can you go back on the slide, I think it was a site plan slide, just the reason it was delayed, I missed the last meeting, it might have been explained at the last meeting when it was delayed, but that one right there, you said something about parking and something like that.
So the parking, that surface parking area was increased and that was done about a week prior to the hearing. So because of that, we needed time to actually take a look at what is being proposed to allow myself as well as engineering to do a full review as the site plan differed from what was originally scheduled before this board on the 6th.
Okay, and just to confirm, maybe you know, maybe the applicant can answer the question better, but on the diagram in the left where you eventually get to that surface parking, those slots right there, that asphalt that comes in from the left and then goes up, I'm trying to compare it to the picture on the right, it looks like those, that is a path, an asphalt path that leads to, looks like hangar space, correct?
I believe that's correct. I'm laughing to check them out, yes.
Okay. And then one last thing, I don't know if you know, or I'll ask the applicant if you don't, but this picture that came in right here, where is that with this asphalt right here compared to this car?
I believe that is by that surface parking area and I'll refer to the applicant.
Okay.
As that, as my understanding was a customer parked like that.
Okay, thanks.
I'll have another question. On that site plan you're showing, those two, the two spaces are the T-shaped items on the left side of the plan there, is that the, those are the two suites?
That's correct.
Now, it's designating those as parking area for customers, man, I'm not used to zoning, allowing parking to be inside the space that we're talking about. It's usually that, here's the square footage and here's the parking out, you know, you need outside, is that allowed?
So it's my understanding that a car will come into the bay and be lifted and then another car will go under it and the applicant can speak to that further essentially so the cars aren't, they're queuing inside of the hangars instead of outside on those parking spaces.
So this is not counted, this is not counted toward required parking for a commercial space, it's just here's how many vehicles we can have inside that we're working on?
Yeah, to alleviate some of the actual off-site parking is to store the vehicles. So essentially when the one that's being worked on is completed, it'll be removed and the next one will just be lifted up, is my understanding. The applicant could probably provide additional information about how that queuing system works.
But for instance, if zoning requires four parking spaces for a thousand-foot space, they can't count the inside spaces as those parking spaces, correct?
That is my understanding. That is my understanding. However, with this being a variance of use, essentially asking for a request that's not permitted by code, I can see kind of what their thought process is to alleviate that off-site parking and speaking to the photo that Mr. Morey has showed.
So that I'm clear on it, how many parking spaces are allotted to these two spaces outside of the space?
So there's five surface parking as well as parking within the structure for vehicles being serviced.
But again, the outside parking is five, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. Yes, Mr. Whitney?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Leck. I'm interested by a fairly stark statement. I want to make sure you're comfortable with it. In the report, it says approval of the variance of use request would legalize the non-aviation-related land use prohibited by the GAO in the final plaque, Note 1, and would result in closure of the current code enforcement case. That's where you are, where staff is, that's the position?
Yes, that is correct, specifically to the pro-trans use. If this application does get approved, which essentially remedy the code enforcement case and this would serve as a vessel for this land use.
Okay, thank you.
Is that the end of your report?
That is it, if there's any other questions.
All right, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Nina Reese with Vertex. I'm going to go a little bit out of order and just answer some of the questions first. So I'm going to go to the site plan slide. Okay, so there were a lot of questions about parking and the number of parking spaces and how parking works. So first I want to point out that Mr. Gandera is intentionally limiting his use to 10 trips per day and to no more than two full-time employees as well. So the code requirement would require nine total parking spaces, but that applies to a Jiffy Lube, it applies to, you know, you name it kind of shop that has far more trips than just 10 trips per day. 10 trips per day is equivalent to what an average single-family residential home has. So just keep that in mind that he's not operating the same. So within the structure, and I think in your packet, if you look at the attachments within the letter of intent, you'll see that there's a photo of what the inside of his shop looks like, and I think I have it in my presentation too. Let me see. Yeah, okay, so this is what his shop looks like. You can see the two hangar units there. So when customers come, he has them come to his shop and then he brings the vehicles into the shop and they can be worked on right then and there. In theory, now he doesn't really need this necessarily because he's got five parking spaces and only two employees, but in theory, he could park six total vehicles within that space, having one elevated and two down below. So that's how he's meeting the parking requirement. Will he ever actually need the total number of parking spaces based on his 10 daily trips and only two customers? And with him having an average of four to five either airplanes or vehicles, he probably will not use all of those parking spaces. But he is meeting the code requirements that way. So that was-
Excuse me, so the code requirement is 10 spaces?
The code requirement is nine based upon his number of bays.
And he's going to count three of those as being up in the air on a lift?
Correct, and then five, five surface.
Well, the code doesn't allow that, do they? To count a car up on a lift as a parking spot?
It didn't come up in the review as that not being acceptable.
Okay.
Apparently, parking a bit difficult.
All right, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah. Let me see. So there was also a question about the vehicles within one of the letters that was submitted. Because it was cut off, Mr. Morey, I actually have not seen that picture, but I asked Mr. Gandera and he indicated that those vehicles are located somewhere right about here. Yeah.
Question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Morey?
So he knows those vehicles? They're, apparently he knows they're his customers or?
I'm seeing a head nod. I have not seen those images myself, so I can't see too.
Okay, well, they're in EDARP for your case, but-
They're cut off in EDARP, so I can't see it.
Okay, granted. So there is more parking going on than going on in the tea hangar?
I haven't seen those images, so I would feel uncomfortable unless I saw those images. If it's something that we need to talk about, can we take a break? So I can look at it and talk to him since I've never seen them?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. Do you want us, do you want me to do the presentation first?
But there's the pictures, so you can have them.
Mr. Chairman, while Nina's looking at that photo, I would say that we may not have commented on the parking through the review, but this is a variance. So the request is variance and the variance is on the site plan. And so I guess in a way I would disagree with Ms. Ruiz saying it didn't come up in the review, it may not have came up in the review because that's their proposal to you for the variance and the site plan shows what it shows.
Okay. So based on that, would you agree that you're asking for variance on parking as well?
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I mistook the lack of comments to indicate that it was okay, so. Okay, so again, variance of use, he's proposing to limit his number of trips and this variance of use only applies to the two hangar units. Joe covered this, but there is a plat note that restricts the uses. So discussing the specific use that he has on the property. So he is a licensed A&amp;P mechanic through the FAA and he has and will continue to work on airplanes in addition to personal vehicles. Some of those vehicles that have been worked on in the past and that continue to be worked on are MLAA vehicles as well as vehicles of MLAA members and then the general public as well. So he currently has just himself and his significant others. So the only two employees are in the audience today. So very, very small business. He would like to hire an additional employee in the future, so that would bring his total count to two and a half. He only works on four to five vehicles or airplanes per week, so not a whole lot of traffic coming and going that way. And then if he does have any MLAA, non-MLA customers, they are by appointment only. He understands that his location is unique and this is not like a Jiffy Lube location, which is why he's limiting himself so significantly. So what he does to ensure that people understand that they're coming onto an airport property, they are notified via phone while they're making the appointment with him. They go over, this is an airport, here's exactly how you need to come onto the property. Don't go onto the runways, airplanes have the right of way and so on. And then when the appointment has been confirmed, he also sends the instructions through them via text as well. For his hardship, statement of hardship, rezoning to a commercial zone district that would allow the use may not be considered compatible because the commercial zone district comes with a lot of land uses that may not be able to be as limited as his variance of use. As you all know, when you rezone a property, it comes with all of the permitted uses. There is no limitation on the number of trips, the number of employees, how that business operates and so on. So you might have trouble getting to compatibility that way. When he purchased the property 19 years ago, he purchased it knowing that there are other non-aviation and commercial type uses within Meadow Lake Airport. He also knew that he works on airplanes, so he thought he would be in compliance. His business has been in operation for over 19 years. And as you heard from Mr. Leck, he was not personally sent a notice of violation until 2024. So he was in operation for a very, very long time without having a notice of violation. And then he was also in operation for 15 years without any complaint even being received by El Paso County. So because he is such a small business, it's just one and a half people at this point, relocating to another facility outside of Meadow Lake would be extremely challenging for him. So the sequence of events and him being in operation for such a long time is a practical difficulty. So Joe did cover the master plan as he identified they're fully in compliance with the master plan. He's limiting his scale. There's also many other non-aviation and other commercial uses within the Meadow Lake Airport area. So no more than three employees, no more than 10 trips per day. And just for comparison sake, a rural home occupation allows for up to 20 trips as a permitted use. So this is even smaller than a rural home occupation. They're within the employment center, which Joe identified this land use is supported. So criteria three is compatibility, health, safety and welfare. So for compatibility, as I identified, there is numerous other similar uses within the area. The R4 and GAO also allow for airplane maintenance and repair. With his very, very limited scale, his impacts are similar, if not less than what could be allowed under the R4 and GAO. He also works on airplanes. And then for health, safety and welfare, because he provides such detailed instructions to his customers over the phone and via text, he's ensuring health, safety and welfare. Criteria four, five and six really don't apply because everything's already in existence and he's not proposing anything new other than the five parking spaces. He's addressed all off-site impacts. He's limiting his trips to no more than 10 per day. Traffic would be the only thing. We already discussed the parking, which I will, after the break, I might have some more information for you about parking. And then we already covered that image.
Can you go, excuse me, can you go back to the picture there?
Yeah.
So those are two units there, correct?
Yeah, they're side by side, so you can see the start of the other one. See this little four by four? It's that same four by four right there.
So where would we be storing six vehicles and I don't see room for more than a couple?
You can't see based on the angle of this picture, but there's room for two vehicles down below and one up above.
Okay.
And so then two vehicles down below and one up above.
And where your cursor is right now, where are those two vehicles? Are they nose to tail underneath there, is that?
They would be.
Okay.
They would be. At this time, he didn't have, and this, this isn't, we just put, that's my car. We just put that in there to show that it's possible, but-
And then where does the, I keep coming back to this because I've dealt with it my whole career, is parking requirements. And this requiring nine spaces for a thousand-foot space seems not ordinary, like it should be a lot less. So where is that number coming from?
Yeah, it's based on the Land Development Code and I think it, let me look at my site plan, but I think it's a certain number of parking spaces per bay, maybe? Let me look at the site plan.
Typically, it's per thousand square feet or whatever, but I mean, this is higher than retail space requires, so I'm wondering what-
Yeah, it's per bay, it's based on per bay and then employees, I believe, but I would have to look at that to verify. And that's another thing, if we take a break, I can-
If you want to come back, I think what we'll do is have you, if you want to do it during rebuttal, you want to, since there's people that are here, is that okay? Okay. Proceed if you've got more to say.
I think I'm done.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Whitney?
Ms. Ruiz, can you go back up to the criteria slide you, slides you went through a couple of minutes ago?
Yeah, which one in particular?
Four, five and six.
Sure.
Okay. And I'm looking at five and you've sort of dismissed all these as sort of saying, well, these don't even apply because this is already being done, which is an interesting argument. The theoretically, what's being done is unlawful at the moment.
Okay.
So what's being proposed, you would suggest is compare, or will comply with all applicable requirements of this code and all applicable county, state and federal regulations, which based on the presentation made to us so far is totally not the case.
So I suppose the correct thing to say would be if the variance of use is approved, then they will comply. We're not aware of any other county, state or federal regulations that they're not satisfying other than the land use, which is the variance of use.
It's a bit of a circular argument, but okay.
It sure is, yep.
Anyone else listen for, great, thanks. Is the applicant going to speak to us or?
No, not unless there's any additional questions. I will need to talk to him about these photos so we can figure out what's going on there.
I have a question regarding his business. He's been there for 19 years, asking for a variance now. I don't know how much longer he's planning on working. But what I'm wondering is about is we've got a big problem out at Meadow Lake Airport, right? There's all these uses going on that aren't allowed. So to kick somebody out of what they're doing right now is problematic, but also letting them sell a business and perpetuate that problem far into the future is a problem as well. So I guess my question for him is, is he trying to do this now so that he can sell the business eventually and someone else can come in and keep doing this for another 20 years? What's the plan?
My understanding is no, that he plans on continuing the business himself. I can talk to him about if he would be agreeable to a condition that would limit it to just him and no future sales.
Great, thank you.
Chair?
Yes. Oh yeah, there you are.
Can staff please answer your question specific to the Land Development Code on the parking requirement?
Yes, please.
Just for clarification, so our parking table in Chapter Six for a repair garage is one space per employee on maximum shift. So if we have one and a half, we can't have half a space, so that'd be two spaces for the employees plus three spaces per bay or stall. So the lift spaces would be the base. We would not typically count that as part of the parking. And then additionally, in Chapter Six, we have a general requirement under general parking standards that the parking is provided onsite unless there is an agreement, and we've seen that in the past with an easement, and it has to be within 500 feet of the use. And that would be directly from the Land Development Code.
So three, three parking spaces per bay and what you're saying is they're counting, they only count the surface area of the bay? Is that what you're saying? In other words, they're proposing that they count a car up in the air as one of their spaces?
When the site development plan comes in, if it were to come in and I were reviewing it, I would review it to the letter of the code and I would look at that and say plus three spaces per bay. So that would be no, I would not count them. The parking in the bay would not count because the code says plus three spaces per bay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for that input, Mr. Whitney?
I'm sorry, sir, just one last for clarification purposes, following up on your good question. So, Ms. Ruiz, so to me, it makes sure I understand- So Ms. Reese, so I, to me, it makes sure I understand your answer to Mr. Carlson. Is the proposal that the variance would run with the land or be personal to the applicant?
So the way that it's been submitted and conditioned today, it would run with the land. But what I indicated is that I'll speak with Mr. Gandera and see if he's agreeable to a condition that would cause it to only be his variance of use.
I understood that to be the case, but I wanted to talk about running with the land, which always makes me nervous. So, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yes, Ms. Fuller.
Those five surface parking spots, are those dedicated to that unit or are they free for all?
I, I will speak with him as well, but my understanding is that the free for all because the property is owned by everyone, though he would be doing an improvement that everyone would benefit from, which is why he needs the, the five.
What do you mean by improvement?
He cannot dictate what happens on the property that's under essentially common ownership. So he can't say, these are my parking spaces anymore than another person can say that they're their parking spaces. So he would be doing an improvement, just like within a shopping center, you, you have parking spaces.
Sure, shared. So I guess, and this is probably a question for staff. It's like, is there only five for all those bays and we're counting them for him? And then we're double counting them for all the other users as well? I, I'm, I'm trying to learn here. I don't understand exactly. Cause they're, they're kind of being proposed as if these are for them. And that isn't necessarily true from what I, if they're not dedicated to him.
No one else within, you know, per, per the permitted uses that are in place today and the platnot restrictions, nobody else within this site, this building has an allowance to have a non-aviation related use. So no one else per the parking requirements has a requirement to have additional off-site parking.
So they're all just storing airplanes pretty much?
It's what they should be doing.
Thanks. Ms. Reese?
So just going on that line of thought, who would be building these five spots right there?
Mr. Gandera would be.
Okay. Does he already have permission to build those five? Has he gotten permission from whoever the common ownership entity that runs it, that he's allowed to, to build those spots?
The manager who signed the application has indicated that it's fine for him to construct those parking spaces.
Anybody else? Great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we'll move into public comment. Anybody here that would like to speak in favor of this item? Seeing none, anybody would like to speak against this item? Please come on up and, if you haven't already signed in and sign in and state, give us your name, please.
Lead over there, I believe. I don't know if that's.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Daniel J. Co. And thank you for allowing me to comment on this. I've been an owner, partner of Meadow Lake or of 7936 Sesna Drive LLC since 2012. I have 11.2% of that property.
And sir, that is the, this big, long building that we see on there, right?
Yes. First, I want to acknowledge Mr. Jeff Gandera that commend him for staff, keeping his established business in operation for 20 years, 19 years. My comments today are not directed at his work ethic or his success. They are directed at the appropriateness of this proposed variance and the accuracy of the information before you. Most of what I want to comment on this morning is from the staff report that was presented by Joe Ledke dated 11/14/2025, which I obtained from the DARPA website. On page one of the report, it lists Phil Martin as the owner of the, that's got his name in the owner block. However, there are nine other owners. When I became a partner in 2012, I signed a membership agreement that gave all members a right to vote in proportion to their ownership on this property. There are nine other owners besides Mr. Martin. And I've spoken with seven of them, including Mr. Eggers, who owns 23% of the LLC. Not one of them was notified of this variance or this action. In reality, Mr. Martin owns only 4.7%. The company threw his, can't see my notes here. Excuse me. Get glasses on to might be able to read this. Might help, huh? Anyway, I've spoken to seven of them, including Mr. Eggers, who owns 23%. Not one of them was notified of this variance. Nor were they invited to be part of the application until in August, I believe Nina sent a letter to all of us inviting us to be a participant in the variance. In reality, Mr. Martin owns 4.7% of the company, though he is listed as sole owner. Importantly, Mr. Martin is also the manager of 7936 Sesna Drive. On page six of this report, it refers to Meadow Lake GA overlay and its permitted land uses. Many of us bought their property there because of this limited aviation only zoning. Granting a variance on this non-aviation business would undermine those protections and erode what we relied on in our due diligence and devalue our properties. On page eight of that report, says that this is a key area. Well, this is misleading. There are five hangar complexes totaling 35 hangars that depend on taxiways of 7936 Sesna Drive for their runway access. On page 10, it talks about services. Water is described as an onsite well. Sanitation is described as an onsite wastewater treatment system. In reality, the well is actually an outdoor hydrant located across the taxiway shared by 74, 7944 Drive LLC, which is another hangar complex. And I don't know of any wastewater treatment unless they're talking about the port-a-potty located next to the hydrant. On page 19 of the report, it states the property consists of 17 equal shares, because there are 17 hangars, I suppose. This is incorrect since the hangars differ in size. Shares are a percentage of the whole property and are based on square footage of the hangar that is owned. Additionally, the LLC also owns the taxiways and the land south of the hangars, both of which are implicated in this variance request. On page 22, under the land development code section, parking, real issue here. The report states that six parking spaces are provided inside the two hangars. But take a look at those two photos on page 26. They've had substantial modifications to the interior of the hangar. There are two staircases, shelving areas of storage that greatly reduce the available parking. Even if the interior was cleared, fitting six vehicles inside would heavily depend on their size. And how are you going to work on a vehicle if another vehicle is underneath of it? As many of us know, parking at the south end of the building by the taxiway has always been problematic. Until recently, that area was filled with transient vehicles awaiting repair plus a camper, leaving no room for other hangar owners. According to the proposed site plan, vehicles will now be parked on the south side of the taxiway, which is also a runway protection zone. That land is co-owned by all, all of the other nine partners at 7936 Sesna Drive LLC, none of whom, to my knowledge, consented to this change or even were asked. I have a letter from Phil Martin dated March 25th, 2013, addressing all 7936 Hangar Association members. The letter was written in response to complaints that the vehicles will park too close to the taxiway and obstructing it. The letter states, Mr. Gandera and Monica agreed to parking no more than two vehicles in the southern hangar area as to not block the taxiway. I have that letter with me. In a later verbal agreement, because of ongoing problems, Mr. Martin further agreed to restrict, to a strict safety buffer. No vehicles parked any closer than 18 feet from the edge of the taxiway to allow safe passage of aircraft. Yet we still see incidents when tow services dropping off vehicles without guidance that violate those agreements and obstruct aircraft movement. Regarding compatibility, well, there's 98 hangars in the immediate area around 7936. That's including 7936 Sesna Drive. To my knowledge, none host any automotive repair shop. Allowing a variance for this transmission repair business is fundamentally incompatible with the character and the function of this hangar complex. Finally, delivery vehicles have been observed on taxiways and runways. It's not of a question of if there's a collision, it's when. The risk is real. It's significant and it can be avoided. In conclusion, ownership notification failures, misrepresentation in the staff report, lack of zoning integrity, undeniable aviation safety risks, property value impacts and incompatibility of land use. I strongly oppose granting this variance. Thank you for your time, for hearing the concerns of the owners who depend on this airport's aviation-focused zoning and safety.
Thank you. Before you leave, we typically don't do question and answers, but I've got some questions for you and I think you're about the only one that can answer them. So I'm going to ask you. The, the normal T-shaped hangar, what have you, seemingly 550 some square feet. Does that typically house a single-engine aircraft or something?
Yes.
Okay. Do the, does each hangar have a restroom in it?
No.
So there's no, is there any water service at all to the space?
There's a water hydrant across the taxiway on 7944.
But inside these?
Property, no.
That entire building, there's no.
Not to my knowledge.
There's no water. Okay. Great. That's all I needed. Thank you. Yeah.
I want to understand that entire building is owned by the 7936 Sesna Drive LLC?
Correct.
Are you? I guess this could be a question for staff. Does he have standing? I mean, my question is, does he have standing to, to do something that affects an entire building? Or would the entire building owner, normally you can't do variances or something without the building owner approving that? And since the building owner is the Sesna Drive LLC, without that entity saying, we approve this, can you, can they even do this?
So here's what I'm going to tell you.
Okay.
I looked and I'm on the state's website right now. So when a property owner comes in, signs the application, the application is signed by Phil Martin and Joe can chime in. I look up the 7936 Sesna Drive LLC on the state of Colorado website. And Phil Scott Martin is the registered agent. And that is really as far as staff can go. And so Phil Martin, as the registered agent, signed the application. I'm not sure we're prepared to go any further as in who are the owners or the other partners. We would tag back to the agent of the ownership of the property, which is the Sesna Drive LLC and Phil Martin. And he signed, Joe, if I'm correct, Bill Martin as the registered agent for the property owner, the property owner being 7936 Sesna Drive LLC, signed the application.
So this is probably a legal question because does he have the authority to do that? I mean, it's like people, like I do small business lending, so you can have like just a registered agent that is not part owner of any company. That doesn't give them the authority to act on behalf of the underlying company. So I, I think we probably have a significant legal question as to whether the, the property owner has made application or someone who is not really the right person has made this application.
So outside of the legal question that Erica can certainly track down, we have a acknowledgement on the application that states that you are attesting that you are the property owner. I mean, from, so from how staff, right? Staff can't track down every potential property owner. We look at the information that we have. There is an acknowledgement on the application that states you are attesting that you are the property owner and you have the right to sign the application. So from a legal perspective related to submittal of the application to the planning department, that is our cover as far as you are telling us you are the applicant. We cannot track you down past the information that we have. And if there turns out to be an issue in the future, you have signed the application as the owner and you're acknowledging that there is penalties for basically submitting an application that you're not permitted to submit. So that is our standard application process. I will certainly let the legal department answer anything specific to that. But that's how the planning department, not only our planning department, but just in general submittals to the municipality occur.
One question, is, is this a condo situation?
It's an LLC.
But there's one LLC?
There's one LLC that owns the whole property.
Okay.
And there's 10 owners by percentage on how much they own.
Okay.
So the, so the building isn't condo-platted, right? So it's a platted lot with a building on it. The building doesn't have individual ownership of space?
Mr. Byers, Joe Ledke, that is correct. It is one building. It is not condoized, one owner. It's a clear, right clarification.
Mr. Whitney?
So, Ms. Chair, I don't want to get out ahead of it, but I'm, I think Ms. Fuller asked a very interesting question. I mean, typically a registered agent, all that person does is satisfy a requirement of the state that people know who to sue and who to send mail to and whatnot. It doesn't make them an officer. They might be an officer, but status as a registered agent does not give you authority to speak for the company. It allows you to receive and send mail. So that's a very interesting question.
What's Jack?
I don't mean to be thoroughly confused what I am. The, I understand, I live in a condominium. I understand someone owning the property, the HOA owns my property, except for inside. So you're saying the business does not own, this business pro trae does not own his business, the building in which he's doing business?
He owns two hangars that he works out of. It's listed as a percentage.
He owns a percentage? In other words, his business?
That's how it's presented in the membership.
But when you close on a property, if somebody buys one of those hangars, what does the title company do?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
They're just buying a share of your?
Right.
You guys agree to a certain share and here's your space?
Yes. My knowledge.
Oh wow. So interestingly, what, what he has is a, a, an ownership stake in an entity, which he may or may not be allowed to sell, whatever your membership agreement says. That happens to be represented in this case by this property from his perspective, but he doesn't own the property. He owns an ownership stake, a percentage stake in the LLC.
That's my understanding.
Let's hear from our attorney.
Good morning. For the record, Erica Keach, on behalf of the county attorney's office. From a legal perspective, a registered agent doesn't necessarily mean that an individual has the authority to act on behalf of the company in this action. But we would need to review the corporate documents. So our recommendation would likely be to continue this matter, to look into it. Another option you may have is as commissioners, you can weigh the testimony of this individual as well as the applicant and make a decision. But our recommendation would be to continue this matter, to get those corporate documents.
Okay. Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any others that would like to speak against this item? Think I've seen this guy before.
Yeah, once or twice. But I'm not going to give you a whole brief this morning.
While Dave signs in, we, we asked the question when this application was submitted, if Phil Martin could sign the application. when this application was submitted, if Phil Martin could sign the applications. And we were told by the applicant and the applicant's consultant that yes, Mr. Martin had the ability to sign the applications. So we can certainly go back to legal and decide who has the ability to sign the application. I'm not sure how that weighs in with the variance criteria related to how you want this hearing to play out, but we, we did ask as many questions as we could on the front end of who is the property owner. And I guess, I guess, you know what? It's hard for staff to tell, how do we say, "You're not telling us the truth" when you make an application, and who is and who's not? We can't certainly do that, you absolutely can. But I believe that we asked as many questions as we could when this application was submitted about who has the ability to sign the application. And we do want to make sure that we're looking at the criteria and have a good path forward for this specific application.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Fuller.
I wanted, for planning staff, I don't think that you made an error. This is, this is an extremely unusual situation. Like, I've done commercial real estate financing for a long time. I've never seen it where it's like, just owned in one big LLC, and then you own 10%, but you have these two units are yours. So it's probably in their operating agreement on how that's all broken out. It's an extremely unusual setup for ownership. But to me, I don't think that we actually have the correct applicant. I think the LLC has to be the applicant for the variance. But I don't think that they have the, something's not right here.
Yeah, and we're not realtors, and we're just planners looking at the application and the criteria and the site plan that's submitted, based on the land development criteria. I don't think we could do any more in that respect, but we can certainly track it down with the attorneys. But hopefully, this is a one-off, because I'm not inclined to track down ownership with every attorney at the submittal of an application. I don't know how we would do that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Whitney.
No, sorry. So I, I'm sure I speak for everyone when I say, nobody's criticizing the staff. This is, this is a wonky situation. So everybody on the staff is not required to have a legal degree to know whether somebody knows, whether the person who's signing has the authority to sign and has reviewed the document. And that's, nobody's criticizing, this is just weird.
Great, thanks. Sir, proceed.
For the record, I'm Dave Alayt, I'm the airport manager at Metal Lake. I can answer questions about the whole thing. I've, I've owned property out there for 30 years. I've been on the board for 28 years. I've lived there for 26 years. Offhand, I can think of five hangar complexes out there that are set up as partnerships, not condoized, similar to this one. So it's not uncommon out there. One of them, when they sell a unit, they actually put that person on the registration with the assessor's office. The other four, just, you buy and sell your unit, and you just join the partnership. They have various operating agreements. So I was going to give you a full briefing about Metal Lake, you've already heard that. I'll save you the time on that. I'm just going to address the, the impacts on the airport of this and other non-aeronautical uses that are occurring, or maybe coming up. And that's where I have the problem. It's not with the individual. Jeff is a good guy, he's had a good business, he keeps himself, and he works out of his hangar. And what, what happens in the hangar is their, it's their hangar, it's their private business. But when it starts to extend beyond the hangar and out onto the airport, then I, then I have a problem, I get involved with that. The route to get to his hangar was described as the roadway. He's been along the north side of the buildings. I happen to own the property next to him. That's how the cars, the pedestrian, pedestrian, the passenger vehicles get to their hangars to go fly their airplanes. Two months ago, we caught a FedEx tractor trailer driving on that road. He couldn't make the turn, so he went out to the end of the road, where there's a barricade, and signs that says, "Airport Operations Area, no unauthorized vehicles." He went around that barricade, onto the taxiway, to follow an airplane down to the Crosswind Runway to come up into Jeff's hangar. I can't condone that. We had quite a conversation with the driver and the manager, and they've assured us that that won't happen again. We've told them if it does, it'll be a federal trespass violation. As an aside, the bigger problem I have is with Amazon Prime. Yesterday was the sixth incident I've seen was Amazon making deliveries out there, not Jeff, to another unit. And they weren't even delivering on the airport. They were just cutting through the airport, because it's a paved surface, and their roadmap gives them priority of paved surfaces over the county dirt roads in the residential area that he was going to. I ripped off another email this morning to the Amazon folks, that that's got to stop. We're going to have, and they drive down the runways. We're going to have a problem with airplanes. The bigger issue here with this particular application is that the space that they've designated for parking is within the object-free area of the runway. There's a state statute, 4310113, that I've been preaching for the past 10 or 12 years, 13 years, that says that government entities with zoning and building authority shall adopt and enforce, at a minimum, land use protections for, in accordance with 14 CFR Part 77. Now, we commonly look at Part 77 as being the airspace, the imaginary surfaces around the airports. But it starts with the primary surface, that's the runway. And subsection 19, paragraph Charlie, talks about the primary surface is the runway. The Crosswind Runway at Metal Lake is a utility runway with visual approaches. The primary surface is 250 feet wide, that's 125 feet either side of the center line. And the designated parking space that's on the application here is within that 125 feet. And he can't move it outside, or it'd be blocking the taxiway at the south end of my hangar. This isn't going to work. We're trying to put 10 tons of stuff into a five-pound bag. I don't know what to say, but that, that is a strict violation of state and federal statutes, and we can't go along with that.
Mr. Chair. Go ahead, Dan here.
So you're talking about the, the six parking spaces they're showing on the, on the site plan to the south of the hangar? Okay, so it was the testimony before that somebody gave them permission, or?
It wasn't from the airport. That is their private property, that's not airport property. But the space is encumbered by the airport design criteria.
Okay, so is there, is there an agreement between the airport and all these owners that say, before you modify any of your land, you need to clear it through the airport association?
Well, that goes back to 1969, when they started the airport, as Metal Lake Airport filing one, and they set the criteria. And then that was, and I wasn't around in '89 when it became a reliever, where the airport association had applied to the FAA for reliever status, and all the FAA restrictions now became effective on the airport.
Yeah. What's the largest wingspan of aircraft you see at Metal Lake?
Well, two, there's two different answers. The airport is designed to be one standards, that's a technical term. That's a 49-foot wingspan, 20-foot tail, and the runway is designed for 12,500 pounds. We have the room to accommodate Class II airports, airplanes, like the Twin Otters at the Academy, they come out and do touch and goes out there. The runway is designed for the Group I airplanes, but it can accommodate Group II.
Okay, yeah. I haven't flown GA in about 30 years, but I fly. And when I'm looking at this, my, the biggest concern, you know, that I have is just clearance, wingtip clearance and, you know, going, hey, a taxiway could be X many feet wide, but the wingspan of an airplane can, can over, overgo over the grass. And so when I see, you know, situations where there's parking that's next to a taxiway, going, these customers don't understand it, but it's responsibility of the, of the property owner or owners to make sure they're not creating hazards for, you know, for aviation. And, and I'll have more to say on it in a little bit, but, but I look at it going, you know, you're responsible for your, you know, for your customers. It's like, I'm responsible for all the people who come over my house, and, and, you know, they're parking in my yard and doing everything else. It's, you know, we're creating a hazard, parking across the sidewalk or whatever. It's, it's creating, you know, I look at it as creating a hazard. And what many people probably don't understand is, airplane could be so wide that, you know, the wheelbase could be so wide, but your wingspan could, could definitely go wider than whatever taxiway is. And probably a lot of these customers don't understand that. So, okay, thank you.
I haven't seen that picture before, but I have that same view on my phone of other vehicles in the same place, because it's next to my hangar.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just for clarification purposes, the nature of the encumbrance, though, from your perspective, is statutory, federal and local statute.
Yes, sir.
Yep, okay. So he may own the land, but it's encumbered by what those statutes require.
Right, just as shown on that plot, this is a 200-foot setback. That's actually shown on the Metal Lake Airport filing, number three, that the building has to be set 200 feet from the property line, because it's encumbered by that runway.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions for the time that we don't allow questions? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else like to speak against this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment timeframe. I do have a question for staff regarding the bathroom issue. From a zoning standpoint, I mean, I'm, I don't think you can operate a business without a bathroom, can you?
Sir, that might be a Health Department-related question. It was my understanding that some of these hangars do have septic systems, and some, I've been told of some agreements of how that works with bathroom needs.
Okay, good enough. Rebuttal? Applicants like to come back up?
Nina Reese with Vertex. So first, I wanted to talk about the photos, and I did speak with Mr. Gander about the photos. So not all of those vehicles that you see in the image are customers. So the travel trailer that's kind of elevated, that is not a customer. And then the, it's kind of like a tan sedan that you can see in that image, that's not a customer either. So I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Well, then my follow-on question is, okay, those two things aren't customers, but I see five more vehicles there.
I don't think there's five more.
I see a white truck, I see a blue truck, I see another blue car. I see a Bronco and a Toyota, a blue Toyota.
One, two, three, four, five. Yeah, so one of the sides, it does show five. So that would indicate that his proposed five parking spaces would be adequate for the use. And then the other side shows, shows four. And he did say that one of the vehicles is located outside of where it should be, so that black-looking sedan is located outside of where it really should be. And he did not have them drop that vehicle there. They dropped that vehicle essentially without an appointment, which is not something that he allows for.
Define "should be." Where should they be?
Sure, so we talked about that as well. So that's part of my rebuttal. So Mr. Elliott discussed that there's a wingspan area, but then there were follow-up questions, and there's no specific agreement in place with the LLC saying, "We agree, we're not going to have anything within this wingspan." There's also nothing recorded identifying that legally, there's a basis for limiting. However, the folks within the LLC do try to comply with the Metal Lake's requests. And so on the ground, there are markers, so that people can tell where they can park and where they cannot park. And the five parking spaces that are being proposed are outside of those markers.
Okay, so whose responsibility is that?
Sorry, can you restate the question?
Who, if something were to happen, whose responsibility is if a customer of yours is not parked where they need to park?
That's his responsibility. So if that, if that were to happen, then he would have the keys. They either would have, you know, if it's an instance of, there's not an appointment, they just drop a car, then they're probably going to put the keys somewhere. That's not something that he advocates for, or really allows for, but he has no control over that. As you can see from the pictures, if it was something that happened all of the time, and if there were more than five vehicles, I'm sure that those that are in opposition would have taken advantage of that and submitted additional photos.
Maybe I'm confused, but I thought the parking is supposed to happen inside the T-hangers.
No, not necessarily. So, so let me go back to what I was saying. So what I started with was, this is what the code requires. The code requires a total of nine parking spaces. And then I went on to say that he is limiting his use, so no more than 10 trips, and then no more than two employees as well. So that alone limits it to where, sure, the code requires nine, but he's not operating the same as anybody else. So the code requires nine. We're saying that we satisfy that requirement by there being six within each hangar, but then there's five spaces that are available off-site.
Okay.
So that the five spaces will be utilized by vehicles that have already been repaired. So when people come and they drop off their vehicles, what they're instructed to do is they're instructed to bring their vehicles to the shop, where they drop off their vehicle that needs repair. It's in the shop, it gets lifted, or, you know, whatever it might be, if it needs to get lifted. Once he's done with that repair, then the vehicle goes over into one of those five spaces. People don't always come and pick their car up the same day, which is why he's got five. That gives him the ability to have his own vehicle there off-site, and then additional customers if they haven't picked up their vehicles.
But those five spots aren't his spots.
He, as you heard, this is an LLC, he cannot control what happens. I don't know what else he could possibly do in this, in this situation and in this scenario. He's, he has no control over what other people do, just like those other people have no control over what he does. Everybody else within the hangar, if they're, if they're in compliance with the land development code and what, what they can do on their property, they should have absolutely no reason to be parking vehicles elsewhere.
His control?
If they're not in compliance with the land development code, then, you know, maybe there could be a zoning violation. All that he can do is provide the necessary parking.
Well, I'll take it a big step back and go, well, he can control it. It's his business. If he didn't have the business there at the airport, then the parking wouldn't be an issue, right? The, the parking, the parking issue is a descendant of having the business. So you said he can't control it.
He can't control if other people park there.
But you're saying, but then what happens when parking gets filled? What is he doing with, what is he, all of a sudden, he shows up one day?
So if it gets filled, then he would have to utilize those inside spaces that he's not using.
But he, but he already has the appointments to fill those, those inside spaces.
But he can only work on one vehicle at a time, so that's why...
So where does a car go when he's working on that vehicle?
So he has two bays.
Right.
Okay. So he can only work on one car at a time.
Right.
So the car he's working on is lifted in that bay being worked on.
Right.
This other side here can hold three vehicles.
But if they're filled already?
If, if in theory, I mean, all of this is theory that we're talking about.
But this is, yeah, I got it. But this is, this is the case, you know, that could, that could occur.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go one...
Mr. Marias, I would respectfully say that, that the request before you today is a variance of use. We are requesting the number of parking spaces and the parking configuration as he has been operating today.
Okay.
And as, as staff has reviewed, and staff has reviewed based on the number of parking spaces that the code requires, it's not helpful to go down a rabbit hole of what-ifs, because we don't know what could happen. We only know how it's been operating today. And you saw in the photos that there are five vehicles associated with his use. He is proposing to construct additional parking beyond what's out there today to satisfy his needs that are in place today. And if you don't feel that that's adequate, then you can choose to vote against it.
Yeah, I, I understand that. So there's no need for outdoor storage?
That is correct.
Okay. Can I ask a question regarding the parking? You heard staff say that, in their mind, the parking requirement is outside the space. I understand you're proposing that we count those spaces inside, but what's, what's your response to that? That really, there's eight spaces required outside of the, outside of the space for his current employee situation?
Sure. So that's the code requirement based upon a typical automotive repair shop. However, this is not a typical automotive repair shop, because they only work on one vehicle at a time.
Great, thanks. Other questions, Mr. Whitney?
Could I follow up just real quick? And it may be in there, I apologize if I missed it. You said several times that he's limiting himself to 10 trips per day. So what, what's stopping him from not limiting himself to 10 trips a day? Is that part of the, is that part of your official request?
It is. So that's specifically noted on the site plan.
Okay.
So if you look on the site plan off to the right hand side, it outlines the request and there are additional lines that identify 10. So if he were to exceed that in the future, then somebody could complain and his variance could be taken away.
Okay. So when he adds another employee, if he were to do that, does that anticipate additional business or just handling the current business?
Yeah. So we did, we did the 10 based on worst case scenario. So if he has two employees because his, his other employee that we're counting today just does office work, so she actually doesn't report to the job site. She's working from wherever, doing books and stuff. So that would be a total of four. And then if he has one customer come and go, that's six. And then if he has another person just coming and picking up a vehicle that's already been taken care of, but they didn't come for that day, that's another two. And then yet again, if there's another person that's coming and going, that's another two. So based on the number of employees that he has and his very, very limited scale, that would, that's more than he would expect.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do you, and I don't know if you're able to answer this question or not, but where the folks that, when they come and fly their airplanes, where do they park? When they take their airplane out, do they park, they put their car in that space and go? Or where, where do they park?
There, there's no official off site parking for anybody within the LLC. That image that you see, you can tell it's not a formalized parking area. And then in the aerial, you can also tell that there's no formalized parking. And throughout most of Meadow Lake, if you look at the aerials or drive through, there is no additional off site parking because people park within their hangars.
Right, thank you. Go ahead, whatever else you have.
Okay. There was quite a bit of discussion about the ownership and what bay or may not be allowed with the ownership. I would say that if, if anybody feels what has happened is not legal, that really is just a civil matter. And if they feel that Mr. Gandera should not be moving forward with the application as the authorized representative, then they could hire an attorney and move forward. I don't think that that's the county's... Sorry, go ahead. Do you have a...
Sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Jack.
I just have a question. I'm still back with who, the person who signed as the registered agent, is that part of Meadow Lake Airport? It wasn't Mr. Gandera, right?
That's right. So what we submitted is an application for a variance of use that is signed by the registered agent. So that's Phil Martin. Phil Martin also provided a letter of authorization saying that he's authorizing Mr. Gandera and Vertex to represent the LLC in these hearings.
So my question may be, the gentlemen from Meadow Lake Airport, are they aware he signed it? And are they accepting that?
Meadow Lake Airport does not have any ownership rights to this property.
You mean from the LLC?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say.
Sorry, say that again.
I mean, are the members, do, are they aware of their manager signing on their behalf?
So a letter was sent to all of those within the LLC, letting them know that this application was submitted. And it included my contact information if they wanted to reach out to join the variance of use. I didn't receive any responses at all. I understand that the LLC does not have any regular meetings and there has not been any votes that have taken place for any of the existing hangars or any of the activities that occur on the LLC property. So Mr. Gandera has no right to enter anybody else's hangar any more than they have a right to enter his or determine what happens.
Well, and I get that, owning my condo. But my, you're still not, my question is, this man who signed as registered agent, put himself out there as doing that and it being okay, there are other people involved. What happens there if the other people now involved don't think that he had the authorization to do that?
So he obviously believes that he has the authorization and the right based upon their documents. If somebody else feels as though he did not do so legally, then they could hire an attorney and they could go to court outside of this process and outside of the county because that's just a civil matter.
Okay, thank you.
There was some discussion about issues with traffic and people driving on the airport as well. But as you heard, it's an ongoing issue, not specifically with this user. And the example that was provided about Amazon, I think furthers that, that it's not really his customers that are the problem. This is an ongoing issue because Meadow Lake Airport does not have gates. People can come and go as they please. People receive deliveries throughout the entire airport. But Mr. Gandera is doing all that he can to ensure that his customers do what they're supposed to do. So I think that's it unless there's questions.
Any other questions? Great, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Discussion. Ms. Fuller?
I, I would disagree with this would become a civil matter. I think in front of this board, we have reasonable expectation that we may not have a properly authorized application. And I don't think it's really fair to ask, like, for example, Mr. Jacob basically told us that the LLC has not authorized this. And so to me, that's enough that convinces me that I'm not sure that we have a legal application. The, with regard to the parking, it would be the same thing where I'm not sure the LLC has approved these spots to be put. And there's question, would they even be allowed? So if the variance were approved, I'm not sure they could even comply with that site plan. It's, it's a stretch at best to say we're going to park, we're going to count in under roof parking as part of the parking. And I think that Mr. Marias is very convincing with the, but for this business, there wouldn't be a parking problem and we wouldn't have all these other issues. So to, to talk about that being, you know, not his fault, or, and there's questions about, like, I hear his, and I'm assuming we're talking about the applicant because there's lots of men in here. So I will be voting against this because I don't think we have the correct applicant. And I'm not convinced that even if it were approved, they could meet the parking.
Thank you. Other comments? Shipps?
I'm just going to comment a little bit on the, we talked about the legality and Ms. Fuller brought it up as far as the applicant. And I'm going to make an assumption here. The, the LLC is owned by multiple owners. There is more than likely an operating agreement that states that Phil Martin is the managing member and has the authority to sign for the company. That's my assumption. I don't know. The owners of the LLC should have that operating agreement. And I think Ms. Riz was correct that that, that could be a legal matter, that if the members of LLC think that Phil Martin is not operating in good faith as their manager, that's something they're going to do on another side. So I'm going to assume with what the county has done, that this is a legal application and the assumption that Phil is the, the manager of the LLC and has the authority to, to put the application in. So that's kind of my understanding of that. However, yeah, I would agree with the operation of the business and the compatibility, the parking. You can't count these bays as the parking space because if he's working on a car, he can't have two cars underneath it. He's got to be able to work on it. So you can't park six cars in there and be working on a car. It would make it really hard. And so their, their outside spaces aren't adequate. And then that those outside spaces are for all the other owners in that bay too. And, you know, if there's five outside spaces and it happens that day that five people come to fly their plane that day, and they park in those outside spaces, then Protrans does not have those parking spaces to use because it is the whole property, the whole building. And so the parking spaces is an issue. But just the, the operator of the business, it's an airport, you know, and it's supposed to be used for an airport. I think we've had this here in the recent year or two where that we've had a few of these. And I believe I've voted against it before and I'll vote against it again because it's just not a airport use or airplane use.
Right. Other comments? Mr. Marias?
Yeah, I'll just throw, you know, about the, the ownership and all that. Maybe this question for, for legal there, Erica. If a variance got approved and then later on realized that the application was wrong, would the variance go away?
Let me get back to you.
Okay. Just the thought process that if, if the Board of County Commissioners say, they bless it and they, and they say, yes, this is approved, then all of a sudden, six months down the road, they realize, well, the whole application wasn't even done by the correct person. Would the variance go back and then the code enforcement violation take, you know, take back over? It's just a, probably don't need an answer now, you know, maybe by Board of County Commissioners if, if this goes through to, you know, to that. So just moving on to other things, you know, really kind of going in two aspects. One, and I think Mr. Elliott kind of, kind of made the point, is I think a lot in our, in our land planning, we only think, we spend a lot of time in the two dimension world. We don't really think that third dimension where, where things kind of grow in the airspace that, you know, that gets encumbered by, you know, by sloping out these, you know, these safety areas and all that. And so when we say, hey, we're going to put five parking spots over here, hey, has the really, the thought process been, well, what does that really mean into the third dimension? And what does that mean for an airport? You know, that, that's where you kind of go, hey, not all the land plan that happens in two dimensions really kind of start working when you start going into the third, into the airspace. So I'll leave there with that. But then my, really my big final point is Meadow Lake Airport is a finite resource in the county. It is the one, you know, publicly, public airport that we have. And so when we start doing things that start limiting the operations, it's, it's concerning, you know, maybe a little bit hyperbolic or whatever. But if all of a sudden we, we found out the, the only level one trauma unit in the, you know, in the county at Memorial Central, you know, the, the owners decided to, nah, we're going to turn that trauma unit into a coffee shop. People can go to Denver to go do that. I think there would be a lot of outcry going, what are they thinking? You know, that, that is a finite resource we have in the county. Or all of a sudden we have these, these landfills and we start putting businesses in landfills. I think there would be concern from the county going, well, you're taking away a, a finite resource that we just can't pick up and put somewhere else. You know, automotive businesses, you have, you have a county the size of the state of Rhode Island, but we have this piece of land that's Meadow Lake Airport. And all the agreements, the, the GAO, you know, the overlay is set up, the plat notes are set up, that you have operations that are aviation related on that piece of land. And when we start straying from that by granting variances to all this, then why even have an overlay? Just get rid of the overlay and say it's a free for all and you could do whatever you want. And then all of a sudden that finite resource just goes away. So that's my biggest concern here is, is granting these resources, it's granting these variances on a, on a resource that is, on a piece of land that is, that is finite. Until somebody builds another airport in the county for general aviation and commercial aviation, this is all we have. And if we start eating away at it piece by piece, it goes away. And so all the employment, you know, it's an employment center. Yes, it's an employment center. It's an employment center for aviation uses. And that's really where we should be thinking about it. So that's my comments.
Thank you. Others? Mr. Whitney, please.
Yeah. So given all the uncertainty and our being sort of forced into making assumptions about what may or may not be the case, I'm personally, I would, I'm not understanding what the rush would be, particularly if we get it wrong. And I'd be inclined to defer to the recommendation from the legal staff, that we determine the question of whether this is an appropriately filed application based on the testimony we've received from several people. If the answer is yes, then we'll reschedule it and proceed. If the answer is no, then they got to fix it before we look at it. But I don't know why we would be, I don't see how you can separate what we're doing from a quote, "civil action." This is a civil action. So realistically, we, I think there's a real question about whether, a fair question about whether or not the application was appropriately filed. If it was, it's easy to fix. Determine from the LLC whether they filed the application. If they did, fine, it's good, then we'll proceed. If they didn't, not fine, we won't proceed. But I don't see how waiting up till the next meeting to determine that undercuts anything. It was 19 years this has been going on. We can wait another month. But that would be my comment.
Anyone else?
Just to follow up on Mr. Murray's question as well as Mr. Whitney's comments, it is our legal opinion that approving this without resolving the ownership issue does create a legal vulnerability for the county if the approval were challenged.
Okay, thank you. Well, my two cents are that, I mean, we typically just have to look at the application the way it's presented and staff has looked at things and brought it to us. So the, in my mind, the, the ownership issue is certainly an issue. But before us today is, you know, they're, they're requesting a variance on not just the use there, but on parking. I don't believe they, that they, you know, the current parking requirement is not met. The, the airport overlay, they're, you know, they're not applying by those, those rules either with the parking situation. So I just think there's so many things. I'll guarantee you the bathroom is an issue if that were looked at. But there's too many things going on here that, that I, I wouldn't be able to vote in favor of it either. So any other discussion?
I'm sorry, sir, one more time.
Yes, sir. Mr. Whitney?
Well, I think that, to me, the fundamental question, particularly based on legal's good input now, is whether we reach the merits at all. In other words, whether this is otherwise approvable, assuming it was properly filed, I don't see how we get to that. I think the question is, should this be continued pending resolution of the application? And then we'll consider the merits of it. But I don't, I don't see how we can consider the merits if we don't know if it was properly filed.
I guess my rebuttal to that is that's not our job to figure out right now. But I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Shipps?
I move for denial of Agenda Item 5A, File VA 253 for the variance of use, protrans variance of use with three conditions and three notations. And this be not, well, how would I say it? So this is for denial, so it would be ordered, ordered by the County Commissioners for...
Right.
I don't know what to say. So I move for denial.
All right.
Second?
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, take the vote. Ms. Marias?
Aye.
Shipps?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Me?
Yes, you, yeah. Ms. Jack?
I vote no because I'm in agreement with Mr. Whitney that I think we have an obligation to know the answer and not put the county in a vulnerable situation.
Mr. Whitney?
I beg your pardon, no.
Beyer?
I will vote aye.
The chair votes aye. So the process, the, the motion carries five to two for denial of the application.
Mr. Chair, and I would just suggest for, for Mr. Whitney and Ms. Jack, obviously this goes to the Board of County Commissioners that legal or the county tries to get the application, the true manager and that stuff squared away before the Board of County Commissioners.
And would you, Ms. Jack or Mr. Whitney, would you like to say anymore with your no vote?
Chair?
Mr. Whitney?
Oh, I spoke way too much today. My concern is, I, in my own mind, I have not reached the merits of this. So I'm not smart enough to, I haven't reached whether you need a bathroom or whether the parking spaces are right. In my mind, there's nothing to reach until I know that this is properly filed.
Understood. Ms. Jack?
I have lots of concerns, but specifically, Mr. Whitney's. But also, there's going to be a huge hardship to this business that's operated for 19 years.
Great, thank you. Mr. Murray?
Just, what day is this being heard at the Board of County Commissioners? Was it December 11th meeting?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
All right. There being no further business, we'll adjourn the meeting. There being no further business, we'll adjourn the meeting.